The light's blinking now.
Okay, it's going now.
Okay.
Just check me.
In your phone, I'll be watching.
Yep.
And then you just hit the same button again.
Yep. Yeah, so you don't have to stay.
Yeah, no, I'll be watching it.
Okay.
Here. So. For those of you at home, we opened the meeting at six thirty. We've done the pledge of allegiance. That's when we realized the camera wasn't on. We've turned it on. We will pick up where we left off. Roll call.
George Cullis?
Here.
Karen Winchester here, Mark Freeman?
Here.
Derek Burton, Burton?
Here.
It's sorry.
That's all right, here.
Uh, Steve Ruth?
Here.
I don't know, I was reading two things at one time.
Okay, so everybody is in attendance. Chair would look to approve, agenda approval. Before we go into that, I want to ask one question of the board. If you go down to new business, items number one, two, three, four, and five, those are appointments to either uh, commissions or boards within the township. They are, there are no new people. They are all just a continuation of people that are already there. Do you want to take them? Last time we did them individually, but I had new people in places. Do you want to take them all individually? Or would you be okay with just renewing them? Because there is no changes.
I just wanted to discuss number five, because I recall that.
Okay, so would you want to take one through four, or do you want to?
Oh yeah, that'd be fine.
Well, because it's only one person anyway, so you just.
No, it's, it's two pe- it's, it's a total, well, if we leave out five for Steve, it's a total of six people.
Oh, you mean you want to do each? No, we shouldn't do each group, all the business together. I thought you meant like on the ZBA, having the two people, you could appoint them under item number three together, but no, we should do each one of these.
The terms are different, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we should.
I'm just asking. I just, I just knew we had no changes, it was just kind of.
And honestly, I think you understand more if you, if I were to put Bush Lake member.
Ah.
It's Bush Lake.
Okay.
Oh, for number five.
For number five, yep.
And that's one member on their board.
Right, right, so, so what I, let's.
All right, then, then we can approve the agenda as it is.
Okay. I'd move to approve.
I just wanted to ask.
Okay, I'd move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Move by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the township board and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Chair would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Burton, support by Clerk Winchester. Any, um, roll call please.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Public hearings.
Oh, that shouldn't be there.
I was gonna say, we just did that.
I know.
That's funny, because you and I both looked at it, neither one of us saw it.
I never, it just glossed right over that.
So we have no public hearings, we have no presentations, reports. Start with the trustees. Trustee Ruth?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Burton?
Okay, so I just have two things. One is a little longer, but I went to that meeting regarding Falk Road and somebody had mentioned in that meeting wetland ordinances. So I've reached out and done some research on different wetland ordinances. There are municipalities that impose a stricter ordinance than what the state is of the five acres, from what I've seen, and I've gotten two, waiting on a third from Novi, one being Genoa, and I may be forgetting wrong. Okay, and Livingston is two acres, and Sharon Township in Washtenaw's two acres, and I'm sure there are many more. So, you know, what I would kind of like to do is to draft maybe a potential ordinance and then send that to the appropriate place and then have it either get approved or denied.
Go through the planning commission.
Okay, okay. So that is what I had on that. The second thing, I saw George's text a while ago and I've been seeing a lot of the lumber out there on the farmstead. I did happen to drive by that. I think it looks great. I think they did a good job on that. So I'm pleased with how the work is, is done.
Okay. Uh, Treasurer, Mark?
Yeah, I stopped today and looked at the barn. They had the two front, oh, they had all the old doors off the front. They were just taking the last one down. And they were constructing the first door. And I went around and inspected the back. You know, I thought everything looked really good, so.
Mm-hmm, I did too.
Okay. Clerk, is that it, Mark?
Yes.
Clerk Winchester?
Uh, none.
What?
No, none.
Oh, none, okay, I'm sorry. Um, Supervisor's report. So, we did get a couple of calls on the fact that they had delivered the wood and it was out in front of the barn. That was delivered last week. Um, we did call the contractor, he knew it was out there. It, it was very clear that that lumber belongs to him, not us. It's his responsibility. Some people were concerned that it was just laying there. But he knew that it was going to be out there and start the project, so, um, that was okay. Other than that, I think there, did we have a letter in, yeah, from the open county eclosation on taxable value? That letter shows that Holly Township for, uh, the twenty twenty-one year has again grown by seven point seven five percent, which is above the, we haven't gotten all of the county numbers out, but it's above the average. It's the fifth year in a row we've grown by more than six percent. We, we've grown each year between six and eight percent, depending on what year you look at.
In taxable value.
In taxable value. So, there was that to report. That pretty much wraps up the reports for today. I had a text from somebody. I wanted to make sure that wasn't to do with us. Public comment. Public comment on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Anyone for public comment? John?
Does that include the barn?
Well, it's not on the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda.
That would come.
Okay, so about, what about the taxable value?
Yes, that's on the agenda.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Okay, the taxable value growth, uh, there's one group that doesn't increase their taxable value at all. That's, uh, people that have a manufactured home. Their taxes is thirty-six dollars a year. That's ridiculous. And it's only because of one thing. The office holders are paid off by the lobbyists to let this thing stand. And it should be addressed with a letter to these people. Because thirty-six dollars a year is an insult. You go out to the park, uh, it isn't a park, to the trailer complex that they're devastating the community with. And you look there and there's a house that's similar in size to one of the, quote, manufactured homes on private property. They're paying, what, thousand dollars, something like that. And the guy next door with a similar house is paying thirty-six dollars a month. But this is Michigan, and it should be addressed. And the way to do it is to write a letter to, uh, the, quote, office holders in Lansing about this. I've talked to them. It's like, you know, they pay us all off, forget about it, basically.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else for public comment?
There is a public comment after the meeting.
Yes.
They know.
Yep. This is just on the items that we'll be discussing as we go through there. All right, then we will move on to old business. And the first thing on that is township property. We, um, we listed three township properties through the last meeting, and, um, we received an offer on one of them. It would be parcel number oh-one-oh-seven-one-hundred-zero-sixteen. That's the one up off of Gage Road.
But it was listed for twenty-nine-nine.
Well, I was just gonna say, it was listed at twenty-nine-nine, and the offer is for ten thousand dollars cash.
And that's way low.
Yeah, well, I was.
And it's just been listed, so I can see if it was six months or a year from now and we still want.
I was gonna say, this offer comes from the neighbor. He wants to add it to his property. He wants to protect himself so he doesn't get a house built behind him. But as you said, it just, this offer was written, what, Mark, three days after the listing? The guy was in your office to begin with.
Eleven nineteen.
This gentleman had come into the office and expressed an interest in the parcel. That was at, that was right at the time we had brought it to the board to vote whether to list these properties. And I told him, that's an interesting, um, coincidence, because we were just getting ready to list the property and that I would, took his name and number, I said, I will pass it to the, uh, real estate agent.
Yes.
So that's why his response, he was basically waiting in the
Yep.
ranks to, uh, make an offer.
Because this is eleven nineteen, it was eleven seventeen was our board meeting.
Yeah. Well, I.
I, I don't remember exact, I know it was right there at the same time.
I, you know, oftentimes you, you get a real, a, a bid price on a property and you could look at countering. When the offer's for one-third of your asking price, it's like, do you even bother countering at this point? Because we're not even close.
Right.
Is that buildable for anybody else? It is. There's an access to it?
It's right on the, it's in, right, um.
It's a driveway easement.
Right.
It does not have frontage on an actual.
No, I know that, yep. I didn't know that that was reasonable.
I am not certain that it's, will perk, uh, but I guess there would be no way to actually know that unless they get a perk test on it.
Right, so wouldn't, I mean, I would, if I was gonna purchase it, I would do a contingent upon it.
Well, for what he wants to do, it wouldn't matter, because he just wants to add it to his property, so he doesn't end up with somebody behind him.
Or we should get at least close to market value somewhat.
I thought, uh, I mean, it's it's just about a one acre parcel, so you're talking around, uh, thirty thousand dollars for one acre. Which I thought, because of the fact that it's, uh, it's not landlocked, but it's always gonna be a slightly touchy situation, because you're e, you're, you have to access your property on the easement.
Is it a private drive, or is it, is it a shared driveway?
It's a driveway with, and then they're granted an easement, which was done before we had, um, a shared driveway.
Oh, okay.
But it's like a road, if you look at it, you go down there, it's because there's other, there's another house at the end.
Right.
So there's
The owner, the owner, that's the driveway goes back to that owner's house.
Gotcha, okay.
Along the way, on the left, I really don't know how that parcel was created even. It doesn't, it's not five acre minimum. It's zoned ag, so it should have been a five acre minimum parcel. And it is, it's not completely landlocked, but it's, it's only accessible by an easement. We have no control over easements. Two property owners can, can get together, they can have an attorney draw up an easement, and they can record it, and the township isn't even involved in, in any way.
Well, it's always had easement, so it's by easement, they have a right to the easement by prescription, so it is just, it's like a shared driveway. Pretty much, you gotta look at it like that.
Without, without a shared driveway permit.
Correct.
Right.
But it's, but it's.
So they're, so they're, right, but the maintenance.
Fouted in just as, as the parcel is.
Absolutely.
So, I guess my thought is, if this had been on the market for a year, and this was the first offer, that would be different. But with it only being on the market two days, when this offer came in, now it's been on the market for almost a month. I think, to me, I think it needs to at least be on the market to go through the spring.
We had another inquiry about it today, so there is activity.
Oh, okay, so people are looking at it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because they spend thirty thousand for a lot in Riverside.
Yeah, so.
That's just a lot.
That's not apples and oranges. I mean, they do have water and sewer surfaces in Riverside.
Yeah.
Paved street, curves, and, yeah.
Well, I wouldn't want that personally, so I'd rather have the one acre parcel.
But I'm talking about as value.
Right, right.
Those, those things have value.
Yes.
So what's the board's pleasure?
I would make a motion to counter a ton.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Ruth. With support by Treasurer Freeman. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
No.
Karen Winchester, no. George Cullis?
Ooh, put me in the difficult position.
Well, that's the, that's the place you have to be. You're the supervisor.
That's okay. I'll say yes. Motion carries three-two. We'll see what the, uh, what the intent is.
I'm just, yeah, I was thinking, if you got, if the office was reporting, we would probably have said yes.
Okay.
The, the thing that I always keep in mind is, is the parcel, the township got the parcel through tax forfeiture. And we own it for a number of years. It's off the tax roll because we own it. If a private citizen buys it, it goes back on the tax roll.
Right, well, and that, and twenty thousand's quite a big jump, and I guess we'll see how serious they are. And like you said, if it does happen, it becomes part of the bigger parcel and that could solve some issues too. Okay, so we will go into new business, which is, number one is the appointment of Planning Commissioner, terms ending in twelve-thirty-one-twenty-four. So, just so you know, there are a total of three commissioners that we're going to approve tonight. Glenn Mitchell's term ends in twenty twenty-three, should have been approved last year, but it got missed. So we're picking that one up. The other two are Kelly Fletcher and Pam Masick. Their terms go to twenty twenty-four. I have talked to all three of those individuals. They have all said they would stay on. So do you want to handle these individually, all three at once?
So I had one planning commissioner on twenty twenty-four, so that should say two planning commissioners for twenty twenty-four. I put one, it should have been two.
Oh, I see.
Yep. So I would move to approve the reappointment of Pam Masick and Kelly Fletcher, term ending twelve-thirty-one-twenty-four.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Winchester Burton? Any further discussion? Do we need roll call on these, or? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we will deal with Glenn Mitchell, um, which goes through twenty twenty-three. That's number two on new business.
I would move to approve, uh, the reappointment of Glenn Mitchell, term ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-three.
Support.
Winchester Burton? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, number three, we will go to the zoning board of appeals, and there are two ending. Okay, the numbers on here are backwards. I have two ending in twenty twenty-three.
They're, right now their terms expired twenty twenty-one.
So they should all be twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
But why didn't? You had, well.
So I.
Who's, who's the one that got missed? Because two of these should be twenty-four. Alan Motzni is the alternative. Chuck Stoner and Tim Turpin, but one of these.
Tim Turpin is the twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Because it was supposed.
So Stoner is forty, twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, so Chuck Stoner and Alan Motzni are the two for twenty twenty-four.
I would move to, say that again, who was it?
Chuck Stoner, Alan Motzni.
All right, I would move to, uh, reappoint Chuck Stoner and Alan Motzni to the ZBA, term ending twelve-thirty-one-twenty-four.
Support.
Winchester Burton again. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, Tim Turpin, that term ends in twenty twenty-three. Is there, is there, Chair entertains a motion.
I would move to
You guys are just gonna let it do it all.
Reappoint Tim Turpin to the zoning board of appeals, term ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-three.
Support.
Support Burton. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, the Bush Lake Improvement Board, that is, um, traditionally been the supervisor that sits on that board. It's not our board, it's the Bush Lake Board. It's just our seat on their board, correct?
And they have a county, uh, person from the, I think it's the Drain Commission, if I'm not mistaken, and then the supervisor.
Water resources.
Yeah, water resources.
Yeah.
I don't want it.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's my aim. I did, Chair entertains a motion.
Oh, so you did, okay. I would, uh, make a motion to, um, appoint, reappoint, um, George Cullis to the, uh, Bush Lake Improvement Board.
Supervisor.
The supervisor, term ending eleven twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Winchester Burton again. Um, that is similar to the Lake Board that I went and, um, served on their public hearing when they had it in, um, Brandon Township. On those, I've been in office five years of this board's and never met. It's, it's there in case something comes up. I think the last time they met is when they put in the weird, um, put in a new weird. So, anyway, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So that takes us down through number five. So from there, we will move on to the Holly Township budget amendments. Mark?
That would be me.
That would be. Oh, I'm sorry. Winchester.
Okay, so, um, we received.
I was thinking money treasurer.
Oh, okay. Um, we received our first ARPA payment, so we have to account for that in the budget. Uh, there's gonna be another one, Mark. When, was it a year, did you?
Yeah, twelve, twelve months later.
Yeah, okay.
The other half.
The other half. And then, um, in the administrative fees.
He mumbled it. What, what is this?
Explain what the ARPA.
Um, the, um, American Rescue, um.
Oh, that's, okay, I understand.
Yeah, it's called, we call it the ARPA for short. Um, and then the administrative fees were considerably more than we had estimated on our budget. And then, um, we've been getting, um, more commissions, um, from the county for other various things and, um, so we want to create a new accounts, or not create a new account, but combine them together, so we're not reporting miscellaneous. They all go to a commissions account. And then, um, we, last month, I believe, we approved sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars out of the ARPA money that was coming in for the sewer project on Dixie Highway.
Yeah, let me stop you there just for a moment. Just to explain to the board, when we did that, we talked about the fact that the county had a mi, a million and some dollars to match fifty percent of that money. The way that works is we have to pay the full amount upfront, and then they turn around and send it back to us. Has something to do with the bookkeeping thing.
Right, so you'll see that, Mark.
Supervisor, DePaulman and I, along with, um, the supervisor for Brandon Township, it's a new gentleman, I can't remember his name, but we all got the call. And that's the process we have to go through. So, but, go ahead.
Well, and then, um, I thought that we should transfer the, the other money coming in, because we don't want it sitting in the budget. We, I don't think we really know what projects we can do a hundred percent. So, um, I'm saying that we should move the balance of the ARPA money to the capital project fund. And then, maintenance and repairs, we have a lot of things going on with the, the farmstead and, and the cemetery, so, um, I allocated some more, um, additional to that. And that's it.
It's, it's a total of three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars in revenue, matched by the expense equals three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say, I think it's a great idea to have these separate accounts like it is, especially when we're dealing with federal dollars, because you, you know how kind of, uh, strict they can be on that.
Absolutely.
And then seeing this other one as well that was created, so.
Yeah, the, the good news is, even if you double the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, we're getting less than six hundred thousand. And for this federal money, the audit on this money only kicks in at seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we won't have to go through an audit.
Right, and it would be a single audit, which is
And I, and supervisor, my net from Oregon Township said it's the worst thing they've ever been through.
Yes.
It took three people like a month and a half to just get everything they needed. But we won't have to go through it, because we're under the amount.
Then the only, only other question I had, this is solely the township revenue from the ARPA. This is not also the village's amount included.
No, they got their own amount.
So I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two Holly Township budget amendments.
Is there support?
Support.
Trustee Ruth, um, motion by Trustee Burton, support by Trustee Ruth. Roll call please.
Further discussion?
Oh, you want more?
I just want to point out that, uh, the sixty-six thousand, six twenty-seven is going to the sewer project on Dixie Highway, and then the balance is going to go to the capital project fund. Want the board to be aware that, once those funds are in the capital project fund, I believe, to, to, withdraw funds from that, it would actually have to be a capital project improvement.
Yes.
In other words, those.
Okay, so they've.
Basically dedicated all the remainder of, I just want to make sure we're all clear, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, just saying, let's all be clear that we've dedicated the remainder of it to capital project improvements.
The remainder of this portion.
That remained, that portion, correct. The other half is still coming.
Right.
That has not been dedicated.
Okay.
And that cannot be amended out, is what you're saying?
It can be.
Oh, it can be amended out.
Could be, yes.
But it would have to be another budget amendment.
Right, right, yeah.
And we would want to do that, because it, we wouldn't take that lightly, you know, to be able to spend that money would be.
And, and the six, just to, now that you were having that conversation, just for the public, the sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven toward the sewer project, that is part of what this money is, where earmark forms water and sewer. So it was an automatic for us there.
Right, it would be a project.
Yep.
In, in some form or another.
Correct.
And we would have to account for that in our, um, assets.
Right, and then, and for further clarification, the capital, uh, project fund is an investment fund. And it, it is, uh, completely invested in CDs. So this, these monies would be, go to the fund, and then they would be, uh, invested into a CD. Those CDs have length of. Those CDs have length of, um, time before, uh, they mature.
We.
So it just depends on the length of the CD. I may be asking the board for direction because the interest rates on CDs are really low. So the longer, the longer that you are willing to go with your CD, three to five years, you'll get a little higher interest rate. If you put, if you just go for a one-year, it's, it's rock bottom interest rate.
You know, we might wanna check and make sure that we have the ability to invest those, um, funds. I, I can't imagine that they would allow that. I think they expect you to spend it. There might be some restrictions on that.
If that's true, then.
I don't know if it's true. I'm just saying, I, I would imagine that, that could happen with these.
Well, then we don't want to put it in the.
No, we, we wanna check with the, the state to make sure.
Unless you just put it into the capital fund, Capital Project Fund in our bank.
Yes.
Without going to the actual investment vehicle.
And to touch on that investment piece a little bit, you know, working for a health department, obviously, we've gotten a large amount of federal dollars. And I believe it was anything over, and I mean, we're talking eight hundred thousand dollars we've received. Anything over, I believe, five hundred dollars of interest we had to give back.
Right, I think there is gonna be some restriction.
So they even penalize you for.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so, so it was able to be invested, we just didn't get to reap the reward of actually investing the money, like.
Federal government.
Yeah, exactly.
And these are federal funds, they're going through the state, but it's still federal.
I've said it before. Can you come in here, leave logic out there? Alright. Alright, so we have a motion.
I think it's a deterrent so that you don't invest it and spend it.
Yes.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution as it's written. We have a second.
Do we ha- should we denote anything on there?
Yes, Steve, we seconded it.
About putting it in our bank instead of investing it? Should we add that as like a clause?
No, isn't that the treasure, up to the treasurer?
Yeah, that's up to the treasurer.
Okay, okay.
I'll get with Karen and we'll determine if, if it's a, a good move to, to invest in the CD. If it's not, we'll leave it in our bank.
Okay.
And it, but it's receded, it's already receded in.
And, and if you decide to put it in the CD, that comes before the board.
And it's on the bills for payment, two.
It, it's receded in, but it's receded in, it's in general. It's in the general fund.
But if you make a decision to invest it, you come back to the board anyway, right?
No, treasurer has.
Oh, I thought I heard you say, I may come back to the board and ask for direction.
Direction, yes.
Oh, but, okay.
Only in the event that, I wanna make sure the board understands if there's any pitfalls associated with it.
Okay.
If there are none, we'll proceed as normal.
Are we ready for a vote? Roll call please.
Steve Derrick Burton.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. Um, Mark Freeman.
Yes.
George Colless.
Yes, motion carries five zero. Okay, next item under new business is the National Opioid Litigation. If you look at the paperwork and you go past the actual resolution to the first page of the letter written on December second, in the middle of the first paragraph, um, it says, "The settlements require the distributors to pay up to twenty-one billion dollars over eighteen years, and for Jansen to pay up to five billion over nine years, for a total of twenty-six billion dollars of the settlement amount." Approximately twenty-two point seven billion of that is earmarked for participating states and state subdivisions to remediate and abate the impacts of the opioid, opioid crisis. State subdivisions is what we are, we're a township. That's what it's referring to. I talked to the Attorney General's Office today. Holly Township will be receiving seven thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. It'll come later in twenty twenty-two. There is, if you go to the website, um, it's kinda tricky to navigate. But if you go to the website, there is a whole myriad, um, on how this can be processed, how it can be spent, so on and so forth. It's basically, um, you, you go to exhibit E and, and you go down there. It can be used so that EMS can buy medical supplies, so that if they go to a house and somebody's ODing on opioids, they can help to save their lives. It can go to Holly Area Youth Coalition. I talked to Susan Papel. Um, she said they would be willing to entertain ideas on classes, or it could pay for printing of brochures to educate people on opioids. Um, it is basically, in the settlement, it dictates how you spend the money. And it's basically first responders' education for the community. It does go into some, um, help with hospitalization and some things. We don't have those facilities, we don't do that here. But you can go and read, there's, there's probably ten pages on what it can be done. But if you go through it, you'll see that it's all either to do with organizations that, you know, are preventative or it's first responder stuff. Um, but we qualify, that's what's out there. This resolution authorizes us to register for it. I spoke with Clerk Winchester earlier today. There are two forms on the website. They look, they look identical. They are within each document. There's a change of about two words. So both documents are required. Uh, the AG told me that because they've had a lot of communities fill out the one and thought the other one was the same thing. So they both have to be filled out and processed. Any questions, discussion?
So all the money would be set to EMS then?
Whatever the board.
Well, the board will have to make that decision when we get proposals on how they wanna use it. But it, it's EMS, or like I said, a Holly Area Youth Coalition could use money for the educational side. That's not Hyatt. That's the youth coalition that, you know, works within the schools. So, you know, that, that point, they would probably come to us with a proposal and say, this is what we wanna do. And we'd say, this is how much it is, and you get that money, and you get that money, kinda of thing. If, because our amount is seven thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars, um, we will get it in one lump sum. If it was more than that, then we were gonna get it ten thousand dollars per year over a longer period. But because we're small and that's what, we're just gonna get one lump sum payment.
Is there reporting qua- requirements back on this money, or just, here's, here's the money and then?
They don't think so, was the answer I got. And, and I talked to, um, gal's name was Cassandra at the Attorney General's Office and got the information and went to the website and went on that. But, um, the website is the National, nationalopioidsettlement.com. And if you go and, you kinda gotta trial and error there because it's not a direct thing, but you'll see where it talks about the settlement. And, and then, when you bring it up, the cursor on the right side of the page, you know, to go up and down, there's gotta be a couple of hundred pages. But if you go down and, and find exhibit E, that's where the information is as to how you can use it. And even that's probably ten pages long.
Oh, wow.
But I scanned all the subtitles, or, you know, the titles. And they were all either EMS or educational programming through nonprofit stuff. So, I, I wanted to be able to have something to talk about, cause we weren't clear what this was because we don't deal with it here, like they do in the bigger communities. Any other discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve proposed resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, the National Opioid Litigation Settlement.
Support.
Motion by Winchester, support by Burton. Any last minute discussion? Roll call.
Karen Winchester, yes. Derrick Burton.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
No.
Uh, George Colless.
Yes. Motion carries four one. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Oh, you have such surprise on your face.
Why, well, because I was surprised by Steve, but he doesn't have to explain. I was just curious why.
It's section B.
Pardon?
Section B, then.
Section B.
Okay. Now, now you have our curiosity up. Yeah, but that's not referring to us, that's referring to the.
Right.
Oh.
I agree.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's the last one on the item. Now we're back to public comment, same rules as before, three minutes. Name and address when you start. And I'll start with that gentleman over there. And sir, for the, for the purpose of talking, go ahead and take your mask down, it's okay.
Um, my name is Stephen Ball. Uh, my wife and I reside at one one four five five Dixie Highway. It's Holly, Michigan, obviously, um, directly across the street from Shannon Distribution. Um, and we, we're here tonight because we were told that on the Planning Commission, um, committee, um, meeting on September the seventh, that, um, my wife and I could not make that meeting. And so we were told that to write a letter, and that letter would have been read, but that letter was never read. So I'm here tonight to read that letter.
Well, no, it, it was very clear. He had to submit, we don't read him. I would make it part of the record. So I did tell him I would make it part of the record. The Planning Commission got an email, plus it was given to them at the meeting. And his parents were at the hearing and made sure that the commission got the letter.
I was told the letter was gonna be read, twice. So I'm just.
This is your public comment?
Yes. Um, to the Holly Township Board, my name is Stephen Ball and I'm deeply sorry I'm unable to attend the meeting because my family unaware of the meeting made prior non-refundable arrangements months in advance. We reside at one one four five five Dixie Highway, Holly, Michigan, four eight four four two, and have been at this residence since the late seventies. It has been a peaceful place until the board decided to rezone the land directly across from us and allow Shannon Fastener to take over. The current establishment has caused a numerous amount of disturbances on our daily lives. These are as follows. Constant low humming, noise resonating into our home, noise and traffic from the semi-trucks, employees entering and leaving the factory non-stop throughout the day, light pollution from the parking lot and building lights, and unappealing visual disturbance from the enormous monstrosity of a building that blocks where we used to watch the sunset. In addition to, I was working nights during the long hours of construction. And this is with the, the manufacturing plant, not the, the plant that's up right now, not the one that's going up. The distribution, yes. Fatigued work nights. Also, my wife and I are in the process of fostering and fear for the child's well-being, well-being, understanding the loud noise affecting their sleep and wake cycle. I was able to attend the two thousand eighteen meeting when the board decided to change the property from light industrial to industrial and voiced my question and concerns about the impact this will have on us. The supervisor of the Holly Area Chamber of Commerce, George Colless, brought to my attention the CEO, Shannon Fastener, Edward Lum, and asked that I contact him for future endeavors. After talking with Edward, my greatest fears of Shannon's plans of expanding to a manufacturing plant were brought to fruition. In my greatest hopes, I wish this would not happen, and since two thousand twenty and the world's battle with COVID, I thought maybe the plans have changed. I am a peaceful individual who does not like confrontation, but understanding the board of Holly Township is allowing our surrounding area and our surrounding homestead to be infiltrated and turned into an industrial heap of pollution and chaos is an understatement. Edward asked me to visit Shannon's plant in Auburn Hills, which I did, because he claims they do not produce loud noise. What I quickly noticed, Holly Township Board, was Shannon's plant was extremely loud with high pitched machinery. I also noticed that surrounding Shannon was Roush Industries, Giffen Inc., welders and presses, Penske Vehicle Services, CIE, uh, Gold Roof System, and many more like industries. What I did not see were houses and homes. This area was previously zoned legally and properly for industrial purposes in Auburn Hills, for the, for the very reason that these types of businesses disturb the peace for the surrounding residents. Why would you allow this to happen? Because we are on the outskirts of Holly and the only surrounding area of downtown is the, of the greatest concerns? Is it because it is a great source of tax revenue and future endeavors to grow Holly? In case you forgot, we are part of Holly and we love Holly. That is why we live here. I asked a question back in two thousand eighteen, would any one of you on the board and Shannon agree to have an industrial plant of this disgusting magnitude in your front yard? Not a single person made on Cite Tech with me and no one answered my question. I'm appalled that I must succumb to this measure and disgusted that the only reply I received was, well, it creates jobs. I am one hundred percent for creating jobs. I am also aware of plenty of areas zoned for industries, such as Shannon, that are vacant and in need of these types of manufacturers. I am in no way for accepting this plan of action that the board has allowed. You should all be ashamed for neglecting and abusing your powers to allow this to happen. So since this time, and there's more I can say, but since this time, this was back in September, um, about a month and a half ago, we noticed some orange cones out. I called the township, I said, you know, what are these orange cones doing out? They said, we have, uh, no jurisdiction, we don't know why those are out. Called Grovan Townships. Called Grovan Township, they said, call Holly Township, well, or call Oakland Road Commission, which we did. So a few days after that, we, one of our over a hundred-year-old chestnut tree was chopped down. And the corner of our lot where the privacy, we had some brush set up for privacy from the, the manufacturing plant that is going up, was all cut down. I could not find anybody to give us any, uh, answers. So it was maybe like two weeks after that, um, they started digging up the ground in front of our, well, not in front of our house yet, but in front of Shannon. So I asked them and they said, oh, we're putting in water. And I was, I asked them like, well, nobody told us about this. And they said, they were told that everybody on our road was made aware and that we were all on a board. I said, no, we didn't know anything about this. And this just keeps going on and on. This is, it's, it's a, it's a every day, every second of every day. It affects my wife and I. And it's, it's gotten to the point where we have, you know, seek counsel. And, um, they are, uh, guiding us through, you know, how to proceed with this. But that is all.
Before you sit down, what, what's your address specifically?
One one four five five Dixie Highway.
Yeah, that part I had, I just needed to remember.
Steve, you said that you were gonna read what you, what was sent to the board, to the Planning Commission in September. That doesn't sound like the same letter.
This is the same letter.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, we are, like I said, um, we're just, we got to the point where now we're just, we're past, you know, the whole, you know, having to deal with all of you and, you know, causing all this, uh, havoc in our lives. So, yeah, that's, we're okay.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
John Love, two hundred North Saginaw. I was at the meeting when they approved that. And I talked to, uh, these Faster Guys. I've been in these shops. And, uh, turning this, uh, area into industrial is, uh, done with the goal of, we're gonna get more tax money. What's taken place in Michigan is, uh, they blew up Flint, moved all the industry to Mexico. And, uh, then whatever jobs, uh, factories are in their higher tax areas, they look for ways to get out of town. And, yeah, I, I guess they need, uh, more services. So they get more services in an area that doesn't require more services, so that drives the cost up for everybody. So, and add onto that the fact that Michigan has the highest truck weight limits in the United States. So they're gonna be pulling in there, crushing the roads. So, this is a real boon for, uh, Holly, which I, I enjoyed because I could escape the disaster in the, the main city. Uh, I was just wondering, uh, while we talked about drugs, that's a, a terrible situation. I don't know what you're gonna do with this money. But I don't know what the fire authority has, how many cases they've treated, but it would be interesting to know that. I, I wonder, what is the vaccine status of the people that work in the office too? I'd like to know what that is on, uh, COVID. I had the COVID myself and I also had the vaccine. The one thing I wanted to talk about, I wanted to come down and get cookies, but I'm, I'm out of luck this year. So. I know how that is. Uh, the barn door, I see they got half of it covered up. And they, are they gonna fix the other half too? I don't know what the status is on this. The, uh, basement, uh, window openings are, are open. Uh, I'd like to know what the plan is a little more than that. I, I was there when they made that con- plan. It was presented, twenty thousand dollar one, and it was confusing. I couldn't understand what they were talking about. Is it just gonna be all paved over? The problem too with the barn, what's gonna happen to the main floor? That thing's a, a mess. I don't know how you'd wanna walk on that without falling in. There should be some stair access to, uh, the main floor from the lower level because that's the only. There should be some stair access to, uh, the main floor from the lower level, because that's the only area that's, uh, safe to go in. So I'm just wondering what the plans are for this, uh, project. I know that, uh, you had talked about leaving the big city, and going out to the country, but one of the things that's so nice about that location is that, you know, behind the barn, it goes down to that creek. So if you're gonna be paving out there behind the barn, all the runoff is gonna be going into the creek. So, it's, uh, it's just a confusing, uh, project. And I wonder, uh, may, maybe there should be some involvement of the, uh, Park Commission to, uh, get involved in this process. I don't know, there's some, uh, dispute somewhere with the, uh, Park Commission, we have that land along the, uh, off of Fish Lake Road. And, uh, there should be some coordinated efforts on these, uh, pu, public, uh, properties of this, uh, magnitude, because it's a refreshing thing to drive by that, uh, location that's like it was a hundred years ago, and then turn it into a, a mini downtown.
All right, thank you, Mary?
Mary Blanchard, three four 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 Old Creek Drive. And first off, I would like to say to the couple, I'm sorry. Just like the people on Falk Road, you're being sacrificed. There, there's no other word for it. And it's all to do big business. And I sat here when they approved them putting five manufacturing buildings on Shannon Industries, tearing out that whole forest, and creating a tax abatement on top of it. That is just wrong. I'd like to say to trustee Burton, I am very grateful that you are making the effort to check into the wetland regula, regulations. The eyewitness accounts of Holly Hills Manufactured Home Park that has been excavating for years on decreasing the size of their wetlands, so they do not have to report, any of their activity has been known. I would also like to request that the Holly Township Board or staff go on the Eagle FOIA request page and request any records on hydrology for the Holly Hills Manufactured Home Park. I have reported three different times, and this is the fourth, that I have been unable to get any information from multiple agencies on any hydrology other than one sheet outlining a twenty-four-hour pumping test for the first well that was drilled in nineteen ninety-nine. Mike Walczynski, our geologist that's been working with us, has also requested information with no results. This is gonna be a really important aspect if the expansion goes through, and all of a sudden, people come up with no water. And as they pump more, Mike Walczynski also feels that they are already pulling from the contaminated dump. The two wells that are currently there are three hundred and fourteen feet deep, they are in the cold water shale, and they are very poor quality of water as it is. So I would appreciate if Holly Township could make the effort and FOIA that request to see if you are able to get any of that information. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment, Marlo? Nope. Well, she was the last person here, I just figured, I give her that.
Why don't you mention Marlo's Dickens Festival history?
Pardon?
Marlo's history with the Dickens Festival.
So, um, as you know, the Dickens Festival came to an end this weekend, and, uh, this was the first year that we've had a, um, grand marshal for the parade, and that was Marlo Davidson. It was our forty-eighth annual festival, and Marlo has been involved in all forty-eight festivals from the beginning. And I will tell you right here and now, you don't know this. The, um, we have pins for every year of the festival. We didn't order any this year because we weren't sure it was gonna happen, and we still have the pins from last year that we couldn't sell, 'cause that didn't happen. We are going to order pins for the twenty twenty-one year, and her lovely face will grace that pin as our first grand marshal.
I, I'd like, I'd like to mention, I think I oughta like the tree next year.
I, I think it'd go a little smoother, huh?
Well, I'll tell you, we've actually had that, we've actually, I had that very conversation with the village this morning, how incredibly embarrassing it was for Shannon to flip the switch and everybody was there.
And nothing happened.
Yeah, about two minutes of-
And they couldn't figure out why it didn't happen, so that's gonna be dealt with, because the village manager was there. And ironically, in the meeting this morning, he said, he and his wife had just watched a Hallmark movie where that happened in the movie. And they couldn't get the light on, and they had to do whatever they had to do, and then he said, they sat at home and thought it was kinda funny, and he was standing in the audience with his grandkids when it wouldn't go on, and he turned to his wife and he said, okay, it's not that funny. So, we actually had that conversation on the pipe thing. So, but I wanted you to know, I knew you, I hadn't told you yet, um, you, your face will grace the twenty twenty-one-
Oh.
Dickens pin.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Yep, as a, as one of the collector pins for the festival, and I'll even show you the picture we're gonna use. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else to be, come before this board? Um, and I will close this meeting at seven twenty-seven. Gotta shut off the, oh, he's coming. Yep, we do have live mic.
Yes, thank you. We did, didn't we? I have some old wetland stuff I'll send you.
Oh, 'cause some of these-
We did the planer, and I, you know, I don't remember what transpired, I'll have to look it up.